Welcome, everybody, to the December 18th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and any other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers for your convenience. Today, we're going to have Mr. Ron Busker do the moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda.
Motion for approval?
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to the, on the agenda is recognition of outgoing commissioners, District One, George Farby, and District Five, Ron Busker, and I'll come down to the podium to give them a gift and recognize them. At this time, I'd like to recognize George Farby for his service to the Pennington County Commissioners for 2015 to 2018. And normally, I guess a while ago, they did away with plaques, so what they did is they got you a gift, Mr. Farby. You got a bowtie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize Ron Busker. Ron's been with us for quite a while. I come up with 22 years total with the county.
I think more like 27.
27. He was an attorney, attorney two, moved to the Commissioner's office, and then on the Board of Commissioners from 2011 to 2018 for two terms. And I just wanted to say a special thanks for all your service, and both you guys for the, for your military services and so forth, so.
Thank you. You know, this isn't always the most pleasant job in the world, but, but I just have to say, we have just excellent department heads and excellent employees that it really makes this job much easier. I want to thank them because it wouldn't be so easy up here without the good cooperation from all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say, folks, you know, the commissioners, they, they put in a lot of hard work and time, and, and it's not always easy, but they always put themselves aside, and they come together during the meetings to get the job done. And being elected officials, we have several of those in here, you know, sometimes that's hard to do, but they all have that commitment to come in here and do that. So I'd like to give you, have you give them all a big round of applause for us. And you're going to be missed.
I know. But you have to be seen.
Top it. Then I'm going to be sat up here. That's going to be weird.
We do have something else for the Commissioners towards the end of the meeting, so stick Ms. Holly, next we come to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. The Board of Commissioners use the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December 4th, 2018. Approval of the resolution to discharge county aid liens of deceased persons as submitted by the auditor. Number eight is approval of the resolution to discharge county aid liens with no activity for 30 years as submitted by the auditor. And number nine is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of November 2018 as submitted by Human Resources.
Thank you, Holly. Is there anybody from the public that'd like anything from the consent agenda pulled? Seeing none, any Board members? I entertain a motion to, for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to regular agenda items. Request for approval of right-of-way easement, West River Electric Association, Mr. Sam Lockhart. Sam? Yep.
Good morning.
Morning, Sam.
Thank you for having us and putting us on the agenda. We have a construction project in the Valley of Rapid City off of Twilight Drive, and it is a cable replacement project. The platted easement for the existing property, it's Lot 4 of Brock Subdivision, has existing platted easements on the side and the rear of the property. We are wanting to go on the front edge of the property, and we are asking for an eight-foot underground utility easement. It'll be in proximity, just directly north of existing sidewalk. The installation method will be bidirectional bore, and as there is an approach on the property, we will put the cable in PVC pipe or steel pipe to ensure that if there is a cable fault in the future, we don't have to dig up said approach.
Motion to approve?
Motion for approval? Seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you for having us.
This is going to be underground, taken from some underground, right? Items from the auditor, item number 11, Budget Supplement SP-18-017, General Fund Jail Budget.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Moller with the Auditor's Office. Now is the time that we've scheduled for the hearing for the General Fund Jail Budget in the amount of $75,000 from non-budgeted revenues received in the current year. I would ask for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve?
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from public, Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Item B.
This is for alcoholic beverage license renewals. One is for liquor, packaged liquor off-sale for Johnson Siding General Store. The other is for retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales for the tap room, tap grill and, can't even say it, the peak grill and tap room, excuse me. We'd like a motion to approve those upon payment of all property taxes.
Motion to approve?
Been moved. Seconded. Any discussion from public or Board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Cindy. Next, we come to item number 12, Items from Buildings and Grounds. Pennington County Jail Expansion and Remodel Project Bid Results and the Construction Contract Award. Recognize Mike Cool.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Pennington County Buildings and Grounds Director. Last week, the, we held the rebid of the jail expansion remodel project. We had strong interest in this project and received four general contractor bids on it. That is one more than we actually received on the first, at the first bid. All indications are it was very competitive based on the questions that we were receiving. Bids range from $4.8 million to 4.4, or 5.5, 4, 5 million, with an average value of about 5.1 million. After reviewing the bids, it appears that Skull Construction Services of Rapid City is the low bidder. We have no reason to believe that this company will not be a responsible contractor on this project. Their bid meets all the bid document requirements, and the bid was conducted in accordance with state law. Therefore, I'm recommending that we accept the Skull Construction Service, Skull Construction Services base bid and alternate number one for a total contract value of $5,282,500. I'm not recommending alternate number two at this time due to insufficient information relative to the pros or cons about use of the system. There is some outstanding concerns for, on operational reasons that we don't think that we can justify additional cost to the project without perhaps understanding that better. To describe what the alternates were, alternate number one, which is being requested be a part of the contract, is for the construction of an additional conference area over the top, over the top of the existing single-story law enforcement vehicle, Sallyport. Alternate two was to add water softening to the cold water side of the domestic water system. This was the aid in, maintain, helping us maintain the, some of our systems over there relative to calcium buildup things such as that in, in equipment. But not knowing some, how this might impact operations of the jails relative to inmate reactions to the system, we've decided not to try and proceed with that. I have included an overall estimated budget for this project. It breaks down as follows. Administrative costs would be approximately $60,000. The construction contract would be 5.2 million, as we've discussed already. Design costs are just over a million. FFNE budget for furniture and kitchen and laundry equipment will be handled through the Sheriff's Department. And then, we have also have an FFNE budget for technology, which is generally data and telephone equipment, and some of our general access and security control systems, and the jail security control system. And we are, I've included a contingency budget of $350,000 for a total estimated budget of We're proposing that this is paid out of accumulated building funds and utilizing some B&amp;G CIP funds. We had previously unobligated amounts of the remaining balance of accumulated building. Some of the amounts that were, already have been previously accounted for in there, but, and then we're utilizing some contingency funds left over from the Care Campus Expansion Project, and then the unused 2018 B&amp;G Capital Improvement Funds of 488,000, and then we'd also be utilizing $270,000 of the 2019 budget. I did, I want to qualify the 488,000. I did, through some discussion this morning, went back and checked some numbers. That number is probably actually 480 rather than 488,000 dollars left over. With that, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioners have any questions for Mike? Ms. Hancock?
Thank you, Lloyd. So, Mike, we had our list of 2018 and 2019 projects for capital improvements, and you've, did you finish all the 18 projects that were on this list?
We have not. We've finished a number of them. Some of them are, you know, as my new role in this position, it's challenging trying to get all those things done. One of the big numbers was, we were trying to look at doing a new chiller purchase this year with probably doing an installation next year of it. I didn't feel like I had enough information about what we were trying to do there to move forward with that yet, so we held off with this. I had the expectation that the money could be utilized for this purpose anyway, in the end, so.
So, next year, you're also using about 270,000 of a list that you have got for 2019. You needed 800,000 for both years. Are you putting off more projects because of the jail expansion? Because that's basically 758,000, or 750 now, thousand, which is like one years of capital improvement costs.
And as I said, I mean, we put together these things and depending on need, some things are going to take priority over time. I believe that we have, you know, that we need, and the list essentially was, up from this time, was the previous director's list generally. Of course, as I've indicated, I'm trying to understand why some of these choices are being, being made and making some decisions relative of that, but I think there's always an expectation that we're going to have to shift some things around as we go forward to try and address the most, the highest needs at the time.
So you believe from these totals that the jail, again, is the, the priority here, and that's why you've obligated this much out of 18 and 19 for these instead of the other projects?
Yep. My, my, some of my concerns is that, and the reason why we developed this project in the first place is because of concerns about the longevity of what we have for kitchen and laundry. It currently doesn't support the population
Right.
that we have. Normally wasn't designed for that, but there are also system problems there that are difficult to overcome right now. These are things that help Buildings and Grounds as well, trying to stay ahead of these things, and that's why I think this is, is a good way to utilize that money.
And I appreciate this, because I know they've been wanting to do the remodel for a while, but I, I guess I didn't know we were going to. I thought it was in the bond to pay for this that we had enough left, but obviously, we don't, and now it looks like we're using some of our capital costs for other things. Is the unobligated accumulative building fund, is that the bond? Is that where that came from, the 5 million?
That was, you know, based, the 5 million dollars is what we've determined through working with the Auditor's Office, understanding with what was obligated already, what that number was going to be. And I've tried to simplify what that number is, because it's always changing all the time, but 5 million dollars is what we've worked as a basis of having remaining funds left over for this project.
From the bond, or?
No, from accumulated billing. All the bond money has been utilized.
So that's the money that we put in there every year so we can do projects?
Well, generally, the accumulated billing currently is not growing other than money that isn't utilized through capital, Buildings and Grounds capital improvements right now. It, we, it's just utilized to make bond payments.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Busker.
And I kind of agree with Commissioner Hancock that we're using money that, you know, was never designated for this, and I guess I don't have a problem with that. If, if you go on to change priorities, that, I, that's probably understandable. I just hope that next year, all of a sudden, we won't have a, you have to use emergency funds now because now we've got this emergency and you don't have the money to do it, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and I hope that doesn't happen, Mike.
I don't, I don't believe that it will, but I, I think that over the next few years, as, as I become more aware of some things that we need to contend with, there's, it's very likely that we can fully utilize that money, but we have the ability to, that we can address some of these things over a year. We aren't in an emergency situation as of yet on anything, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Farby?
You've talked quite a while, and what you're saying is we're broke. We're at 50 million in the hole, roughly. We borrowed 60 million in the last 10 years to 10 million dollar borrows, loans since I've been here. Of course, I vote against both of them, but we spend and spend and, and spend, and we're broke. And we're in a hole. Why are we, alternative one is almost, the lowest bid was 399,000, just rounded off at half a million for a conference room. Do we really need a half million dollars for a conference room?
Kevin's coming up to explain what.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin Tompkins, Pennington County Sheriff. We've talked through this project a number of times and gave you all the different phasing to it, and by doing the conference room above the Sallyport, it's a unique construction because it's above the Sallyport. It's not like building a freestanding building, if you will, a room. That'll allow us to eventually do a phase that we're not doing in this project to renovate the admin space within the jail. So we would take our existing conference room, move it into that one, then vacate that space and renovate it for more office and admin space. So that's why it's included, it was included as an alternate.
Mr. Chair, once again, we're, we're broke, and we're in a hole, big time in a hole, in my opinion. 45, 50 million is our, I think it's our current debt, right? But obviously, I'm going to be voting against this. We, that's one of the reasons I ran four years ago, was to get control on, on all the regulation that this county does to rural folks, and the spending that it does, asks for all the residents of Pennington County. I'll be voting no.
Thank you. I think, you know, I tend to agree with Mr. Busker and Ms. Hancock. We had big discussions at the beginning of the year, you know, this money was set aside for these projects, and we asked them to be identified so we knew and prioritized. And I, I understand the need to, that we need the infrastructure redone in the jail, and it's moved up on the list, and I, I think, I was always under the understanding that it could, things could happen. But I do have their concerns as, you know, the list that you gave us, we're going to have to work on, and, and we shouldn't put it off any further than that. That's my two cents. At this time, is there any discussion from anybody in the audience? I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion's been made and seconded for approval, and you got, Carrie, you got the wording for that?
I do.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
One no from Mr. Farby.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next, we come to item number 13 from Highway Department, the Scenic Township, number seven, Maintenance and Snow Removal Agreement. I'll recognize Joe and Mark.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Mark Chalk, Pennington County Highway.
Joe, we need your full name, too.
Joe Miller, sorry.
Thanks.
Pennington County Highway. The Scenic Township, from what I've gathered here, we've been working with them all the way since 1981. They perform their own maintenance and snow removal on their highways in the scenic area. They're approximately 32 miles of county road maintenance and snow removal, 27 of which is gravel, or, excuse me, 25 of which is gravel, and then seven miles of that, which is asphalt. Last year, there was an agreement put into place with a limiting amount of 20,000. Mark and I have gone back, you know, the last four years, the average cost was about $22,684 coming from them, so we're asking to raise that limited amount and approve the agreement between Scenic Township and Pennington County for the snow removal and maintenance to 25,000.
Is there any questions from the Board?
Nope, that'd be my motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries now.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
How easy it is, Joe?
Next, we come to items from Human Resources, Pennington County Travel Policy and County Vehicle Use in Consideration. This comes from Commissioner DeSanto, and I apologize at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. DeSanto has a medical reason for not being here, but I'll let you say your piece before we probably.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Sir, do we want to continue this until Mr. Commissioner DeSanto's here? Are you okay with that? Okay.
But before you do that motion, let me make one comment.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sorry.
This was something Mark had brought up for the last, well, I think since he's been on board, and I, for the new Commissioners that are out in the audience, and not only for us, I think, thank you, John, for getting us the policy so we can review it. A lot of questions have come up about this stuff, so I think it's, it's in our best interest to, to review it and maybe do a little research with your people, and we'll, and then we'll, yeah, continue.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So again, at the request of Commissioner DeSanto, I reviewed our current travel policy data and also started to look at the county vehicle use process. I, I would highly recommend that we take a deeper look at both of those, but I was looking today just for further guidance as to what the goal is. Do we want to develop standalone policies for each of these? Do we want to refine the things that we have in place? And then I also attached the information from our purchase policy through the auditing, Auditor's Office as well, that talks a bit about that. So you can see the current structure. I did some research. I, I didn't dig into this a lot yet, depending on what direction we wanted to go. There's a number of policies that exist in other entities that govern both of these. Even the state of South Dakota has policies specific to both of these, but the state of South Dakota also has an office that specifically deals with travel and vehicle use. So we, we don't have the intention of developing that type of a process here, but I think we'd be well-served to have more clarification as to what these processes should be, or at least recommendations. The other thing I did find is, is through the state of South Dakota with their travel office, they actually have discounted rates with all of the lodging in South Dakota, at least it seemed very comprehensive when I looked at the different lodging establishments, severely discounted from what the normal rates are, even compared to our off-season rates here in Rapid City area. And I think that would be an advantage for us to have those same relationships. I'm not quite certain how we would develop that unless we partner with the state to, to be a tie-in, but I'm just looking for information as to what the goal is to achieve with these, these two different policies, or if you want to develop a policy or just refine what we currently have.
Thanks, John. Any questions before motion?
Just one, sir.
Go ahead, Ms. Hancock.
So, is there a big issue with this? Have you found there's many people that are violating? I mean, why, why the change, I guess?
No, good questions, Commissioner Hickock. It's not that there's necessarily violations. There's a lack of clarity, I guess, as to the process and/or the goal. Are we trying to do it the most efficient way? to do it the most efficient way? Is there just complete discretion within each department? Do we want to have some guidelines for the county? As best I could tell, when I read through the current purchasing policy, the piece that did speak about doing it, traveling in the most economical and practical way for the county, was rescinded in two thousand eleven. And that seems to be... It would be one of those bedrock or cornerstone pieces of a policy, but that was rescinded. So, I'm looking for some guidance. Do we want to establish that? Do we want to have some other guidelines that says these are the tier of hotels that should be used initially? Or I think with Commissioner DeSanto, his questions also had to do with rental vehicles. Do we recommend or specify that it can only be a subcompact? Or, and again, Commissioner DeSanto had discussed with me, do we want to say that primary vehicle should be Lyft or Uber versus a rental? So, it depends on the situations. And even when we had some travel within the county here recently, we looked at the Lyft expense, and it was actually higher to use Lyft than it was to rent a car. So, depending on the frequency of travel and what it's needed for, if it's for some type of a seminar, generally, there's gonna be some type of a shuttle from the airport to the seminar, or vice versa. I mean, those things exist. I don't know that we can put specifics in for every situation, but I think there's a way for us to better communicate the goal.
And I probably answered a little bit of that, Deb. I'll echo what John said. That's kind of what it's... Looking at efficiencies of prices for rental cars, that was one concern, and lifts and so forth. But then, when you start having those discussions, then we start talking about what happens if you're a female that doesn't feel comfortable using Lyft in the deal. So, we... And that's where we started running into, and I thought it'd be better if we review it, and John... That's why John's coming here, looking for a little more direction, so we can have those discussions when everybody's here to kind of narrow those down.
So, Chairman, just follow up, please. So, the bottom line for me is that, John, I believe you do an awesome job at what you do, and you brought back some really good, sensible, common sense policies that have improved our... Everything we have done with our employees. So, I would trust that you would come back with some sensible and common sense stuff that we need to either eliminate or add to our policy, so it makes it better for the future of renting vehicles or travel. Like you said, if we could save some money on hotels and stuff, I mean, let's get it done. So, I guess the direction, I guess for me is let John review it, look at what's going on, what's the best that best serves Pennington County and our employees, then come back with a recommendation.
Well, he's doing a review, but I really feel uncomfortable passing it on without... I think our key person who brought it to attention needs to clarify his direction also.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah. I thank you for the kind words, ma'am, but also, I have to give credit to the departments and to the people I work with here. Any of the things that I brought forth are really based upon a team effort, so.
Okay. Do we have somebody else that wants to speak? We don't have a motion on the floor. We get a motion for continue. It's no discussion. Dan, did you have something you wanted to say?
Dan Richard. There are several times I've reviewed all the travel, and every one of them says twenty-five dollars for bags. Everyone. Twenty-five bucks for bags. Twenty-five bucks for bags. Twenty-five bucks for bags. It's just... I think it's worth looking into. Why is it always... The other thing is, maybe it's not fraud, but it's definitely waste and abuse. I've seen employees going down to Las Vegas and staying on the strip on a Super eight is like two blocks away. It's a lot of money between that, between staying on the strip and a Super eight or a Motel Six or something. You're not down there to lounge out. You're down there for county business.
Thanks, Dan.
And I consider that a waste and abuse.
Thanks, Dan.
But I think they need to be reviewed. And the other thing, I think, is nobody travels without talking to the Commission. These guys just pack up and go. And, I mean, I was in the military for thirty years, and nobody just packs up and goes.
Thanks, Dan. Looking for a motion?
Move to continue. January second.
Okay. I'll second that. It's been moved to continue to the January second meeting and seconded. Any further discussion?
Does Jeff... Do you need any more instruction in that, or...?
No, not at this time, sir.
There is no discussion on a continuance. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, John.
Commissioners.
Ms. Holly Hennies.
All right, Commissioners. This agenda item is for authorization for payment of legal fees. There's two cases currently going on that we have billing for, and it's my feeling... I'm not sure the Commission office budget, without having December expenses fully accounted for, can support these extra payments outright. So, for that reason, and being consistent with the motion that the board made earlier this year, this is a request to utilize contingency funds and transfer those into the Commission office budget so I can make these payments. The first one is to complete the case in the American Legion Home Association Post Twenty-two case and requesting authorization for a general fund contingency transfer to the Commission office budget and authorized payment for fourteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The second one is to move for a general fund contingency transfer in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars to the Commission office budget and authorized payment in the case of Duane Nevada versus Pennington County. And that will get us up through, I believe, today for the current bill that we have right now and authorized payment to get that done.
That'd be my motion.
Okay.
Moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And the third motion is to authorize a general fund contingency transfer in the amount of a thousand dollars to the Commission office budget, which will account for additional work that they will be completing from today through the thirty-first, to finish that reply brief out as well in that case.
That'd be my motion.
Moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion?
Just one. What... Did you add the total of everything, Ms. Holly? Like, is it like twenty-two thousand something, isn't it?
Yeah, roughly about there.
Okay. And how much is left? You said the seventy-one thousand was in our contingency?
Just under fifty.
Because we took...
We'll turn back into the general fund.
After this? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Next week comes two items from Chair and Commission, and we do, I regretfully announced that we did not win the LNI games this year, but we had a lot of fun. Just for those who aren't aware, it was... The team was Ron, Roskinak, myself, Deb Hancock, and Mark DeSanto participated in the LNI hand games this year. And Ms. Holly come down and took some pictures and got to see what it was like, too, but it was very exciting and fun. It went too fast. I think we were... I think the Commissioners are so used to being spread out a little bit. We were too close together. So, that's my take on it, but I'll pass the baton on to Ms. Hancock. She was there, too.
I had a lot of fun. And it was funny, because me and Ron were trying inside, outside, left, right, and then they're like, okay, we just made the wrong... Okay, we didn't mean that. But the city, Jason and Ms. Laura and Ms. Darla, and then there was Ms. Teeny Thomas there.
Teeny Thomas, yeah.
Yep. We just had a lot of fun, because people were going back and forth on each other, just being silly, putting, I call it juju, on each other. But it was kind of fun. And we had one of the Native American young ladies singing for us, so that was cool. And our instructor, who was very patient, was a nice young man. So, we really had a fun time. But next year, we'll be more, pretty much know the game, instead of just, like all of us, we were just laughing the whole time mostly. But thank you for the invite, Lloyd. And Lloyd did give Mr. Ringcounter a gift, a very nice Black Hills gold piece that we appreciated very much from our team. So, I thought that was pretty awesome, that you planned ahead, and you did something nice for a man that does a lot for our community and our group. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. Any further discussions on that? I'll just say, it was a good time.
It was.
But next year, everybody keep in mind, we do a practice run before we do the real thing. I think that's what we did last year, I think, but gives us some point. Next week come to committee reports. Left to right.
I'm quite disappointed that you didn't win.
We had to do the walkie-talkie.
I went to the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners in Phillip. We were, I think, New Commissioner Drews was appointed on a committee to find officers for next year, and I believe that he found one for president of the Black Hills Association, Lloyd LaCroy. The moral of the story is, always go to the meeting, because when you don't go, you get the job. There's a couple of bills that are coming up. One is going to be pretty important, I believe. It's proposed by Harding County. Right now, the state law provides that if you have an emergency in your county, you have to pay the bill up to two mils of your assessed value. And for us, that would be about seven million dollars. And they're afraid of the demonstrations possibly that will occur along the pipeline. And so, the bill is to reduce that two mils down to a half a mil, which still would incur a couple million dollars for our county if we, you know, have a bunch of protesters and we have to go and do some legal work. And it would mainly probably be sending the Sheriff's Department up there and time for the deputies and that kind of stuff. So, that's one bill that's gonna come around. They already have, I think, a sponsor in the House and working on a sponsor in the Senate. They want to get some Senator from eastern South Dakota, so it's not just a pipeline bill. It's also, you know, if you have a protest for hog confinement unit in Brookings County, that they would be faced with the same thing. So, now hopefully, that's gonna be an important issue for us. You know, since the pipeline only goes through, what, seven miles of Pennington County or something like that, not very much. But it's right in, I think it's called the Four Corners, where four counties come together. And so, they're kind of anticipating that may be a focal point for some protests. So, we will see. Hopefully, that bill gets through. You know, the problem is, George may want to say, and I do, too, you know, we can put all that money off on the state, but guess what? We are the state. And so, you know, all that really does is helps distribute the expense to everybody instead of just one county. I mean, it would break a county like Harding County. They just can't... I think they would pay six, seven hundred thousand or something. They can't... They just can't do that. So, some of these small counties would really be in trouble. And we would be. I don't know where we'd come up with seven million dollars. So, anyway, that's what they spent most of the time discussing. Carrie, you got anything else you...
Go ahead, Ms. Hancock.
Went to the Fire Service Board. Fire Service Board is... Firemen, again, have been working hard for the last... They always work hard, but in the emergency services, they're organizing some of their groups and just getting more organized, which I appreciate. The fairgrounds, they're moving forward with their stall barn. They're in the phase where they're looking at the insurance and how far away that building can be, and just a few details on it. Again, they did get five hundred and fifty thousand from the city on the vision funds. Last night, they had their end-of-year Christmas party, and that's always fun, and met some of their new employees. One in particular for their meetnits, very nice man. So, congratulations to them. They had a good year, and they have a stock show coming up. And they work very, very diligently to organize their part of that, and I think they do a great job. So, congratulations to them, and that's about it.
Thanks, Deb. I will say, one of the meetings that I've been to, I'm just trying to think of the official name of its community healing initiative from the Department of Justice, I believe is where it come through. This was our third meeting up at the Mother Butler Center, and actually got to meet the new president of the Pine Ridge Reservation, so that was a plus. Right now, they're looking at goals to bring in the community together and the healing process between now we... Police Department, but also the community. And so, that's the purpose of it, and it's gonna be a pretty long race. Richard, I can't pronounce his last name, but I'm on the South Coast Civil Rights Commission with him. He's from the college down there, is running it with a group. So, we can give you more heads up once that gets going. Attended the MPO meeting, which was the same time as the Black Hills Area County Commissioners meeting this week, so I wasn't there. But that went well. We did changeover of chairmans and vice chair, and I was elected chairman of the MPO for next year, as Bob was no longer... What's Bob's last name, Deb?
Heidegurken.
Heide... Yeah.
From me.
Yeah. He chose not to run next year, so he stepped down. We all thanked him. He's been an inspiration throughout the community and for Mead County. And so, job well done to him, along with our Commissioners. After that, there's nothing really moving to report from those. George, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. So, now we're done with committee reports. We have vouchers we can approve.
Move approval on the vouchers?
I moved and seconded to approve the vouchers, the two million, forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-four fifty. Any discussion?
And Mr. Chair, I...
Mr. Fairby.
One law office here has got thirty thousand bucks for the month. Is that reasonable? Court-appointed attorney, thirty thousand bucks. It's inner law office.
Thank you, Mr. Fairby. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no. At this point, we do have about forty minutes till we start the Board of Adjustments. We have three items in the executive session that we could take care of right now if the Commission so desires. And then we'd have to go into executive session afterwards, again, for the personnel.
That'd be... You guys okay with going into executive session? That'd be my motion?
Motion to go into executive session for contractual pending litigation for South Dakota CL one twenty-five dash two, and for personnel per CDCL one dash twenty-five dash two one. Any further... I'll second that. Any further discussion? So, folks, we'll go into executive... So folks, we'll go into executive session, we'll just come back at 10:30. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, look for a motion to command of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to command of executive session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I recognize.
I have a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Boesker.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the Pennington County Highway Superintendent's right-of-way acquisitions limit to go from $10,000 to $15,000.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? None. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I think that was the only item we needed to address. So we'll go straight into Board of Adjustments. Look for a motion to go into Board of Adjustments.
Could be my motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into Board of Adjustments. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Cassie.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. The first item in Board of Adjustment is variance 1819. This is a variance to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from 25 feet to 17 feet for an existing detached garage. The applicant is Seven Wonders. The agent is Fisk Land Surveying. Due to not having a full board today, I did talk to the agent this morning, and she is asking that this be continued to the January 2nd meeting.
That'd be my motion?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to continue the January 2nd meeting. Any discussion? None. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Agent Janelle, I wouldn't have been that mean to you.
All right. Item B is variance 1822. This is a request to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from 25 feet to four feet on the south property line to bring an existing carport into compliance. The applicant is Jerry Bertram. Again, due to not having a full board, I contacted the applicant this morning. He's asking that this one be continued to the January 15th, 2019 meeting.
So moved?
It's been moved. Second. Seconded to continue the January 15th meeting. And all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Moved to come out of Board of Adjustment?
Second.
Moved and seconded to exit Board of Adjustment. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we come to the Consent Agenda.
Yep. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C, layout plat 1738 for Dorothy Johnson Estate. Great Western Bank is the personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estate, and it's recommended to be continued to the February 5th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item D, first reading and public hearing of rezone 1710 and comprehensive plan amendment 1709 for Dorothy Johnson Estate. Great Western Bank is the personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estate, and it's recommended to be continued to the February 5th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item E, minor plat 1841 for Larry and Lenora Ruland, and approval is recommended. Item F, minor plat 1827 and subdivision regulations variance 1808 for Paul and Carol Neiman. It's recommended to be continued to the January 2nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item G, first reading and public hearing of rezone 1807 and comprehensive plan amendment 1807 for Paul and Carol Neiman. It's recommended to be continued to the January 2nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item H, minor plat 1842 and subdivision regulations variance 1811 for Gerald and Judith Smith, and approval is recommended. And item I, road construction within a section line right-of-way review, 1602 for Cody Shad, and approval is recommended.
Thank you, Cassie. Is there any member from the audience that I could, like any of those items removed from Consent Agenda? Any from the board? Did entertain a motion for approval?
Approval of the Consent Agenda as written?
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Regular agenda items, Cassie.
The first item on regular agenda is item J. This is layout plat 1840 to subdivide and create Lot 1 revised of tract B and Lot A revised of Lot 1 of tract B of HES 281. The applicant is Rhonda Champion. As this property exists today, it is dual-zoned suburban residential district and low-density residential district. It's 5.18 acres, and there are currently no structures on this property. What they are proposing to do is reconfigure the lot line. There currently is a developmental lot line in the middle of this property. They're proposing to reconfigure that line in order to equally divide this property. Currently, each of those halves is just a little bit, one half is just a little bit bigger than the other. This property is owned by two sisters, and they're trying to divide the property equally. So they are proposing to just move that lot line about 100 feet to the east. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. The Register of Deeds did mention that the proposed legal description needs to change. At this point in the plating process, since this is just a layout plat, they are not required to have a surveyor or an engineer involved at this point, so they do not. This is a hand-drawn proposal. If they proceed with the plat at the minor plat process, they will have to get this drawn by a surveyor who will help them change the legal description. So since the property is dual-zoned, they'll also have to rezone this appropriately if they proceed with this. So staff recommends approval of layout plat 1840 with 10 conditions.
So moved.
Moved and seconded for approval with 10 conditions. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I've got a.
Mr. Farby.
Dual zoned, how does that happen?
The last time I checked on this zoning, this property was zoned in like the 60s. So I'm not really sure how the dual zoning portion of it happened. But at that developmental lot line, one half is zoned suburban residential and the other half is zoned low-density. Low-density doesn't even fit with what it, what the size of that half of the lot is right now. So, but since it was rezoned so long ago, I don't know why.
So when you're saying dual zoned, a specific piece of ground isn't dual zoned? The two lots have dual zoning. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. At that developmental lot line, right there in the middle, one half is, has a different zoning than the other half.
But the same dirt doesn't have two zonings. It's the same parcel that has two zoning.
Right, yes.
Because of the developmental lot line.
Yes.
Does that make sense to you, Agent Janelle? You ever heard of dual zoning before?
We can't, we can't have questions out to the.
Well, anyway, that, to me, it seems really strange.
Motion on the floors for approval. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to item K. Item K is layout plat 1839 and subdivision regulations variance 1810. This is a request to combine three lots to create Lot 1 revised of Block 1 of Forest Homes Development and to waive plating requirements. The applicant is Seven Wonders, Jessica Hessler, and the agent and surveyor is Fisk Land Surveying. As this property exists today, it is three separate parcels. Currently, Lot 1, Block 1 of Forest Homes Development is the one that contains the existing structures. It has a single-family residence, a detached garage, and an onsite wastewater system. Lot 2, Block 1 of Forest Homes Development is currently vacant. And also tract 0046, less Forest Road right-of-way is also currently vacant. What they're proposing to do is combine all three of those lots. It would be 1.02 acres, contain all of the existing structures, and access would be off of Forest Road. Currently, two of these properties are zoned low-density residential district. The small piece to the south is zoned suburban residential district. So if they were to, to put these lots together, the proposed lot would be dual-zoned. Therefore, they do have to do a lot-size variance or a rezone. Their rezone is actually going to be heard next. There was a variance that was approved on this property in 1998 for the existing detached garage. The variance as it was approved was to reduce the required side yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet to replace the previous detached garage. But it did not reduce the required front yard setback. A site survey performed by Fisk Land Surveying indicates that the detached garage is 17.1 feet from the front property line. So they have submitted the setback variance to bring that structure into compliance, which they just continued earlier in this meeting. The plat and subdivision regulations variance was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Nothing of significant concern came back. The three subdivision regulations variances that they are requesting is to waive some middle of percolation tests and soil profile hole information. There's already an existing septic system. Road improvements to Forest Road and West Highway 44. The layout plat decreases density by two lots, so it doesn't appear that road improvements would be necessary at this time. And the third one is any improvements to the undeveloped section line right-of-way. That section line right-of-way is not in use right now, so it does not appear that it would need to be something that would need to be improved. A portion of the existing residents on this property also does encroach into the section line right-of-way. So staff has spoken with the agent, and they will be required to vacate that portion of the section line right-of-way to bring that structure into compliance. Prior to filing the plat with the Register of Deeds, however, for the purposes of a layout plat, staff doesn't see any issues with this. So staff would like to do this in two separate recommendations if we could, Mr. Chair. The recommendation for the subdivision regulations variance 1810 is the recommendation for approval to waive the three plating requirements.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? See none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the recommendation for layout plat 1839 is a recommendation for approval with 13 conditions.
That's my motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? See none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Takes us to item L. Item L is the rezone 1808 and comprehensive plan amendment 1807 that goes along with that plat request. It's a request to rezone the 1.02 acres from low-density residential district and general agriculture district to suburban residential district and to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from low-density residential district and PUD-sensitive to suburban residential district. That request that they are looking to do appears to be in harmony with the surrounding zoning. Within a half mile of this property, there's general agriculture district, low-density residential district, and suburban residential district. The nearest current zoning for suburban residential district actually abuts this property to the southeast. So it does appear that this fits in the neighborhood. So staff is recommending approval of rezone 1808 and comprehensive plan amendment 1807.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? See none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is minor plat 1844. This is a request to create lots 1 and 2 of Castle Creek Estates. The applicant is John and Barbara Wilson. The agent and surveyor again is Fisk Land Surveying. You have seen this property before in the form of a layout plat. Currently, it is 163.01 acres, zone general agriculture district, and contains a single-family residence, indoor arena, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. What they are proposing to do here is to create Lot 1 of Castle Creek Estates, which would be approximately 80.04 acres. And Lot 2 of Castle Creek Estates, which would be 83.07 acres. Both of those properties meet the minimum lot-size requirement for a general agriculture district, so a rezone is not required at this time. And access to both of those would be off of South Castle Creek Road. This was before you as a layout plat in November, on November 20th of this year. It was approved as a layout plat with 10 conditions. There was also a subdivision regulations variance that was approved to waive some middle of the plat at a scale of one inch equals 300 feet. Any additional road improvements to South Castle Creek Road. Dedication of right-of-way and improvements to undeveloped section line right-of-way and percolation tests and soil profile holes. Currently, this property exists under one tax ID. However, it's actually three different legal descriptions. So what they are proposing is to essentially reconfigure the lot lines and consolidate the three existing legal descriptions into two platted lots. So they're basically just trying to clean this up. Staff recommends approval of plat, minor plat 1844 with eight conditions, and this was just approved by the Planning Commission yesterday.
So moved.
It's been moved. All seconded. Seconded. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The final item that I have is item N. This is a request to refund penalty fees for Jerry Bertram. This actually goes in conjunction with one of the variances that was continued from earlier. However, Mr. Bertram asked that I still put this in front of you guys, even though he continued his variance. So basically, how this variance should be needed came about is in October of this year, one of the owners of Prairie Acres North contacted the planning department and wanted their conditional use permit reviewed. During the review of the conditional use permit, staff discovered that there were carports already existing within that mobile home park. Up until November 13th, when the Planning Commission approved the extension of their conditional use permit, carports did not meet the setback requirements that were outlined in their conditional use permit, so they were not able to have carports out there. So staff has been working with the five owners that had carports to bring those into compliance. Mr. Bertram's is one of the very first lots off of Country Road. So his carport that's over the existing parking pad does not meet the minimum 25-foot setback to Country Road. It's actually about four feet from Country Road. There was a building permit that was applied for in 2011 for the carport. However, it was later voided with a note on the building permit stating decided not to build carport setback issues. However, aerial photos show that it was still put up sometime between 2011 and 2012. So by the Pennington County's ordering ordinance, section 511 W1, when Mr. Bertram submitted his variance request, he was required to pay the doubled application fee plus the $500 penalty fee. So he did pay the $1,170 when he submitted his variance request. He is asking for the penalty fees totaling $800 to be refunded to him.
Thanks, Cassie. Any comments from the commissioners?
Chairman.
Ms. Haggar.
Couple of things. It's by Country Road, and we're, is it legal? I mean, is that going to be functional carport when you have that close to a road? Are they going to make them later in order to expand that road, take that carport down anyway?
That was one of the concerns that came up through the routing for the variance. The Highway Department and actually the City of Rapid City also brought up the fact that Country Road may at some point in time need to be expanded. And that, there's a picture there to the right of where that carport sits right now in relation to Country Road. So there was that concern that was raised. Mr. Bertram does understand that that could be something that comes down later down the road. The only thing with Mr. Bertram is when the Planning Commission approved the extension of their conditional use permit for Prairie Acres North, they did approve a condition that allows carports to be placed over the existing parking pads. So with Mr. Bertram's lot and actually one other lot to the west, due to where their parking pads are located, which was done by the mobile home park, not by Mr. Bertram, it would prevent them, those two lots, from being able to have carports because they would not meet that 25-foot front yard setback.
Follow-up. So he was told, or he knew, because it was, you know, he canceled it. He knew he couldn't build a carport because of setbacks, and he built it anyway.
It's my understanding through conversations with Mr. Bertram that it was his wife that was dealing with the building permit side of it. In conversations with him, he stated that he thought everything was okay. That's why the carport went up. So now he's just discovering that it was not okay. Is the conversation that I have with him.
Okay.
Hi. You done?
Yes, sir.
I struggle with this because if anybody's driven through Meadow Lake Trailacore here in town, that's where my mom lives. They've got almost every lot. And the pads are poured by the mobile home park, and usually that's what they're going to cover. And I think, I was reading through this, and they're rented lots. They don't own the lots. They're paying lot rent. So does the responsibility really fall on the person renting it? Are the landlord, I call them landlords, which they are. They're paying lot rent. You know, I've been voting against these last few times, but I think in these cases, these carports can come down in a matter of hours and be packed up and be put away. I mean, it's not like it's a big structure. I mean, I'm willing to listen to what the commissioners have to say about this, but. I mean, I'm willing to listen to what other commissioners have to say about this, but they say Prairie Acres and Country Road, maybe I'm confused. Prairie, Prairie Acres goes down Maul dry, or Seeger.
There's a Prairie Acres North and a Prairie Acres South.
Okay.
This is Prairie Acres North.
Okay, Prairie Acres North. Okay, but, I mean, either way, to me, I think we're kind of discouraged, I understand the setback, but I think we also had something along this on St. Pat Street a while back with, I mean, not the county, but the city did with a carport in that vicinity too, but I struggle with it, I'm willing to listen to it.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
No, okay, so I was involved with the St. Patrick, and we had decided when we went with St. Patrick, because I was, that was my district, that we couldn't build on that side that, where that mobile home park is there, we couldn't build on that side anyway, we'd have to put the sidewalk and expand the road on the other side because we got the old plans. So that's why we ended up letting them do carports in that trailer court. The other thing is the precedent, if, this is about the, the fee, you know, for putting it up today, so if I'm talking about the fee at this point, I believe that I would have him pay the fee, knowing that I, if it's his wife or him, I believe you talk and they know. So you put up a carport, it said because of setbacks you couldn't, you did it anyway. I mean, there has to be some kind of consequence for not following the rules there, so later on, I'm listening to what you're saying, Commissioner LaCroix, that that can be taken down quick and that kind of thing for, for doing a board of adjustment. That might be a whole different opinion of mine, but for the penalty, I'm gonna, I won't make the most because I can, but that would be my opinion.
Any other discussion, Mr. Farabee?
Can you put that picture back up?
Yeah.
Thank you. How long was, any idea how long the parking pad's been there?
I don't know, Prairie Acres North wasn't originally created in like the eighties, I believe.
Yeah, I, I used to live there in eighty-seven.
So they were part of the court?
Yeah.
So there's vehicles parked in there, are they encroaching? Forget about, and I don't even call it a building, it's, but if they don't have a roof or a room like, do the vehicles, do they have to go, or do they have to stay setback?
Well, the vehicles aren't covered under our zoning ordinance for setback requirements, so it's just the structures.
I don't even call it a structure, but, but I'm with Commissioner LaCroix, it's crazy. If they expand or widen the country road, then where's that place going to park? That particular lot, where they going to park their vehicles?
Do you mind if I speak?
Yeah, well.
I, I guess my biggest concern is, is not so much, I understand, that's why I asked for some input, because I understand setting the president, but it's a rented lot, so the owners of the property, to me, are more responsible for dictating what happens in that trailer court. If the owners allowed that to happen without oversight, it should be, that's where I'm getting at. I think, and I could be way out base, Casey, Cassie, but when a person rents a lot, they're dictated to what they are allowed to be able to do and not do, and, and so sometimes they may have gotten the communication, I understand there was an application before, but hey, it's okay.
But.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Busker.
So where, where's the variance request sitting right now?
It just got continued until the fifteenth of January.
About the fees.
Yeah. Well, it looks to me like that's a very dangerous situation. If four feet from the road, I mean, and if it was me, I'd give him about two weeks to take it down and give him back his eight hundred bucks. And it means he'd have to abandon his variance request.
Mr. Chair, so the vehicles that are, there's no vehicles in there right now, but I presume that parking pad is for vehicles, so isn't it dangerous to have them sitting that close to the road?
They're picking up their mail from the mailbox right there, they're only going to be there about a minute.
So Chairman, I have a suggestion.
I'm talking about the vehicles under the shelter, I call that not even a building, that's a shelter, but.
Yeah, okay, what's your suggestion?
To continue this until the next meeting to see what happens with the variance.
That sounds like reasonable.
Okay.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to continue to, the other one's to January second meeting?
It's to January fifteenth.
January fifteenth, we'll continue to that point in time.
Have a substitute motion, Mr. to refund the penalty.
Motion dies for lack of a second, I'd like to, George, but, motion dies for lack of a second. So the motion on the floor is to continue to the fifteen. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
One, motion carries with one no.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Move to go to executive session?
We do, but I think we have items from the public, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Good G.
If not, we get more executive session, but I think before we go into executive session, I'd like to take a moment of privilege and thank our commissioners that are here today. Mr. Busker, I'd like to give Ms. Hagcock a time to say comment to her going out commissioners, but if they haven't noticed, we did something with your guys' name tags, we'd like to present your, your tags to you first.
Do that first, yeah.
Oh, I see something, I'm almost afraid to read it. Thank you very much, I like it. Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Make it look older, you need.
You know, I know I didn't say much at the very beginning, but I'd like, I'd like to start out with Mr. Farabee. My comment is to Mr. Farabee, I, me and George have had a few battles, a few arm wrestling matches, and so forth, but I just want to thank you, Mr. Farabee, for your diligence in coming, finishing out your term and being who you are. I, I think you brought out some of the best in the staff by, by questioning some of them, always having the questions, and I think I've made that pretty clear to you in our conversations of how, how much I respect, I think your input was just as valuable as anybody else's, and I want to thank you for your service for the commission. And Mr. Busker, my comments are to you, I'm going to miss you, Ben. Mr. Busker was, to me, when I, when I'd make a decision and I had my, my jitters and my shakes and not knowing what, if it was right or wrong, I'd call him up and he'd say, yeah, that's all right, simple, fast, to the point, and, and it reassured me that I did something that was okay, and he's always direct and to the point and no BS along the sides, and I appreciate that, and I'm really going to miss that. I depend on, for a lot of his thoughts and, and his insights of what was going on. I had, I had his years of service off, but, but not his knowledge. But with that, I'll, I'll leave, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hagcock, since she has any comments.
Thank you. I just appreciate anybody that wants to serve the public, whether we agree with them or we don't, they still offer a point of view sometimes that we don't see, and it doesn't mean they're wrong all the time. I do like someone that does cause a little bit of controversy in a sense, and a little bit of disruption when it comes to not being the status quo. So I appreciated that about George. It made us, I think, better teammates, it made us better leaders on some of the information, so I appreciated that about what George had done with some of his stuff to make us think better. That's part of being a team, everybody has this part. Mr. Busker, your knowledge and information always was appreciated in every sense of the word, and your sense of humor was quite enjoyable. You always made me laugh, and we're going to miss you both. Mr. Busker, again, you've got more time than most of us in knowledge, and I'll continue to call you on that knowledge and that information because it made a difference for me while I was serving with you, and it will make a difference for me while you're off this board, and you will be well missed. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you too, it's, it's been a pleasure, and I, you know, I, I'm sure I'm going to miss coming down here and, and seeing all these smiling faces, but it, it, I, I agree, we need to have people step up and run for office, and I'm glad we had a couple here this, well, more than that, we had four or five people run for these offices, so we need good people, and I, I think next year you're going to have a very nice, very good commission.
George, do you have any comment?
I have a lot to say, but I'm not going to say it today, thank you.
Thanks, George. Next on our agenda is, we still have an executive session for personnel, South Dakota CL one dash twenty-five dash two, and I can say this is for evals, department head evals.
Yep.
So that's the one time I can.
Can he put his fist up?
I can say what it is for, so needed, motion to go into executive session?
Go move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Main thing is that the journal, like you said before, I appreciated Lloyd that it is for performance evaluations on our staff, so.
Need a motion to come on to executive session?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Recognize Deb Hagcock.
So my motion to award the fire administrator, Drone Harvey, one performance step effective one, one nineteen, grade twenty-one, step sixteen, six thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents a month.
Second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Second one is to award buildings and grounds director, Mike Cool, one, let's see, grade twenty-four, step twenty-four, total amount eight thousand five ninety-seven.
Second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Aye. Next one is the health and human services, Barry Tice, one performance step effective two one nineteen, grade twenty-five, step six, seven thousand two nineteen nineteen per month.
I think Mr. Busker wanted to second that one.
Barry's.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
So John Morrell, step effective two one nineteen, step, or grade twenty-four, step eight, seven thousand forty-eight.
Second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously.
You know, I'm not so sure that you don't have to have the yearly amount on there, not just the monthly.
The doll, just the monthly dollar amount.
Monthly, yes.
Yep.
The monthly dollars, that all she needs.
Merry Christmas and thank you for serving George and Ron and happy new year.
Well, I think, I think you've got to make a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Farabee.
There you go.
All in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.